Good evening. I'll call the meeting to a halt. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Aye.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to those in the audience, to those viewing us at home. I'd first like to begin by just summarizing what the Board has been considering in executive session since our meeting on November 4th, then again on November 18th, and then this evening before coming into open session. The Board has been discussing town administrator's contract extension thereof or renewal thereof. The town administrator has approached the Board and requested of the Board not to either renew or extend the contract. This evening, at a four or zero vote, the Board has accepted the town administrator's request not to extend or renew his contract. On behalf of the Board, I wish to thank Mr. Valiakonis for his eight and a half years of service and look forward to working with him through the balance of his contract, which expires on June 30th, 2014. Mr. Valiakonis, do you care?
I did have a statement that I prepared, but I prefer to hold it until the end of the meeting, not the beginning.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move right to our Item 5 on the agenda as we get in the late start in the open session to the change of manager of Great American Tavern. Is there anyone here? Sir, please come up to the podium. Identify yourself and be our association with.
My name is Mark Normanan. I'm the general manager of Great American Tavern, 303 Main Street, North Reading.
Okay. And you have a change in your manager?
Yes, we had a prior general manager, Michael Labo, who's no longer with us. I took over the property about two and a half months ago and go through the change of manager to make sure that I'm on the liquor license moving forward.
All right. Board members, any questions? Mr. Valiakonis? Okay, Mr. Fode.
Can you just give us a little bit of your background real quick?
I've been in the restaurant business a little over 30 years. Certified chef, I've spent past 15, 16 years of my career out in the front as far as being the assistant manager, assistant general manager, food and beverage director. I've already held two liquor licenses in my name, one for Bertucci's Corporation and another one for Stadium Bar and Grill out of Quincy.
Anyone else? Mr. Valiakonis?
I'm going to add that all the paperwork is in order and there were no negative comments received from departments on the applications before you this evening.
I do have some additional paperwork that I said I was going to provide this evening, and it's just basically a few more of my staff members for tip certification, so this hand needs to make it into my packet as well.
That'd be fine. That's a requirement for the license that's going to be renewing.
It was actually for both.
Okay, great. Thank you. We can take that.
Yep.
Any relation to Rob?
Yes, my cousin.
Boy, you shouldn't omit that.
I don't know. Rob's a fellow lawyer of mine, lol, so. It's a good thing. All set, Mr. Fode.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change of manager for the all alcohol commedital license for our Great American Tavern, 303 Main Street, from Michael Labo to Mark Normanan.
Have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Here we are. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, one absent. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Good luck. Anyone here for a public comment? Before we go back to legal bills? Legal bills for October?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the legal bills for October 2013 in the amount of $5,269.33 as follows. Copeland Page General, $3,473.83. Copeland Page Labor, $1,080. West, $715.50.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Here we are.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valiakonis?
I just want to add that if you go through the breakdown that's provided by Attorney Klein, you'll note that there is a $100 charge attributable to the police department. Keep in mind that much of that charge, about $100 of it, is related to the litigation involving ROC construction and is not costs that have been incurred by the police department for this particular purpose.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Prisco?
No, just reviewing the legal services part of it.
What page do you?
On the second page, actually, of the part of the...
The right here?
No, the narrative. I don't have a page number here, I'm sorry.
It's page two up at the top? From the right here?
No, it's just with the Copeland Page let ahead.
Oh, okay. The let ahead, okay.
There was an alleged slip and fall accident or something like that. Is that...I don't want to make a big deal, but I haven't heard of any issue, but is this a alleged issue that we should be aware of?
Which section?
Mr. Valiakonis, if you go to the first Copeland Page let ahead?
Yes.
Page 22.
Yes.
On the packet.
And I guess the second item down. Analyzer review rate demand letter for alleged slip and fall accident?
Yeah, we...actually, the school department was named as a...received a 258A claim notice that was filed, and as the normal protocol, what we did was we provided a copy of it to the school department and a copy of the notice to town council so that they're aware of it. There's been no lawsuit that's been filed at this time.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Anything further?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, one absent. Thank you. We'll set the license renewals, see how many we can get done. You've got like three minutes.
Yeah, let's get them done.
License renewals, we'll see how many we can get done. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following commedital license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Captain Pizza, China Cuisine, Inc., Dunkin' Donuts Holy Donut, Dunkin' Donuts No Read Main Op LLC, Dunkin' Donuts Shawna Donuts, Inc., Gatherings DBA, The Senate Cafe, Ginger Gourmet Restaurant, Great American Tavern, Heavenly Donuts, Mike's Famous Roast Beef and Pizza, Papagino's, S&amp;M Subway of North Reading, The Hornets Nest, and Vayasa LLC DBA Subway. Have a motion?
Second.
A second. Mr. Valiakonis, all fees, taxes are going to be paid for all these license holders?
Correct. What we normally do is no license that comes before the Board has any outstanding fees or taxes that are due to the town, they're all verified through the Treasury or Congressman's office before they come to you.
Thank you. Mr. Prisco?
Mr. Valiakonis, do you have an off the top ahead? Did all of these individuals submit their paperwork on time, or...I mean, I remember in the past years, we've had some trouble with a few of them, and I...
They wouldn't be on.
They wouldn't make it to this list tonight.
I understand Selectman Prisco's concerns. We have to prod them. Some are better than others in terms of returning their paperwork to us, but we do our diligence in terms of sending out letters reminding them of the deadlines that we face.
Mr. Chairman, my point is that I stopped in a few weeks ago, talked to the administration folks, and they really have to go the extra mile to get this stuff approved, and it really is upsetting. I don't understand why all, a lot of these businesses, we have to go back with second, third, and sometimes fourth notices, along with phone calls and emails, to get this done. And I had asked that if we...for those that really had a lot of trouble with, I'd like them to be pointed out so we could address it right here at this meeting. I think every board member should know that you do have a few businesses in the town that it takes a tremendous amount of effort for us to get to this point, and it shouldn't be that difficult. And it's very expensive on the town for us to take those extra efforts.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should just let the public know that the list that was read off just recently by Mr. Fode of people that have submitted the paperwork. The fact that Mike has brought this up in the middle of this is...
And the reason?
You know, I understand why.
But to get the paperwork ready for today, and I think there's a few here, Bob, it took third notices and sometimes fourth notices to get it. That's my point. And I think you should be aware of who they are.
I have a list of those establishments if the Board cares to know, because Selectman Prisco is correct. What we do is we send out letters, we make phone calls. Our last step then is sending out certified letters. So, over the course of the year, we would have sent that one, two, three, four, five, six, seven establishments received certified letters. Ginger Gourmet, China Cuisines, S&amp;M Subway of North Reading, Mike's Famous Roast Beef and Pizza, New England Beverage and Redemption Center, North Reading Auto Sales, North Reading Transportation. So, when those licenses come up for renewal, please be aware of the fact that those licenses did require some extra effort.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, they're on...
Three, one, two, three, four of them are on this one right here.
Right. That's why I brought it up. And I have some objection to it. Almost to the point where I...for the sake of time, I'm not going to ask this, but in the future, next year, I'm going to ask that they be put on a separate motion, because I'm going to vote against giving them a license. Because I just don't like the tremendous amount of expense and extra effort that's put on this town every year. They don't seem to get the message, though. I don't want them to get a unanimous vote to get the license. So they get the message. Thank you for...sorry for taking the extra time.
No problem. Anything further? Here we are. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero, one absent. Yeah, it's now 7:30. I'll move to the public hearing. We've got any water rates for FY 2014? Is there a public...there's got to be a public hearing notice. We have a publication?
Do you have a copy of the hearing notice? I don't have a copy of it in my packet.
Do we have this in here?
No, there's not one in...
We don't have one? Okay.
We'll get one. Thanks, Dick. Just a second.
We gotta wait. We still have the notice. Folks, we're just waiting to get a copy of the public notice that has to be read before we start to hear. Steve's not here this evening.
No, I haven't heard.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. Meeting, notice water rates, capital plan hearing. Quota's with the requirements of Section 191-16 and 191-17 of the quota of North Reading. The Board of Selectmen and the North Reading Water Commission will hold the annual water rate and water system capital plan hearings on Monday, December 2nd, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. in Room 14 of the North Reading Town Hall. Thank you, Mr. Fode. Mr. Connavalli, I'll turn it over to you at this point in time.
Sir, good evening. Before you, you have a PowerPoint, a summary of the memo I sent out last week. That memo went to both the Selectmen Finance Committee and the Water Commission. The Water Commission is scheduled to discuss this Thursday at the meeting. So, this is just the initial presentation. No decisions are to be made at this point. Information only.
Thank you.
First slide, that will be the agenda. Slide 2, it's on the background. Between 2008 and 2011, the Water Department...
Mr. Connavalli, do you actually have a PowerPoint that's going to be shown here for the public?
I do not have.
I'm sorry.
The Water Department had a revenue deficit for those five years. Due to that, the Department revenue, it was insisted the town make the rates self-sustaining to the effect that they actually held up the tax rate, I believe that was FY 11, setting a tax rate. After that notice, we hired our engineering company to do our rate study. They presented some recommendations, which we adopted for 2012. High, high rate shock. We went up, I think, three increases in that period of time for 24% total. Since that time, the amount of retained earnings from the water rates, the revenue in excess of expenses, has been, as noted. Officially, the FY 12 was actually FY 13. FY 13 is 14, because it was a...it was declared surplus in that year. Did I get that right, Mr.?
Did you hear what Mr. Connavalli said?
No, we went back and forth. It's actually surplus from this year, but actually was...
It's like free cash.
Free cash. Slide 3.
Just for clarification, the FY 12 number of the $68,000 was that this past June town meeting put back into the...this is the number that get put back into the water...
$500,000.
Capital funds.
Correct. To pay back towards the $500,000, right?
Right. But we haven't taken any action on the surplus from last year.
That's correct. We'll take action.
The plan is to put that money back into the capital plan, where we took money out when we have the water rate problem.
We have a reminder to have an article on the June town meeting, Mark, to do what Selectman Ussery has suggested.
Slide 3. Mark Clark, the water treatment attendant, has done a projection looking at FY 13 and 14. Our estimated revenue for FY 14 is roughly similar to FY 13. We've had four months of billing, relative conservative estimate. And with FY 14, at this point, with four months...four months into the fiscal year, five months, excuse me, we're looking at $7,000,000. It's the estimated retaining earnings. And the only other trend to date is it seems to be dropping $100,000 every year. It was $268,000 first year, $168,000 last year. Seems consistent, the drop per year. Next slide is the estimated FY 15 water enterprise budget. Again, Mark tends to do this very conservatively. Personal services were estimating 2% increase. Expenses, our three big expenses are end over water, chemicals, and electricity. That's estimated increase of 2.5%. Debt service is $403,000, which is about a 3% increase, and I'll explain that in a moment. Indirect cost, the cost the town is paid back by the Water Department for services rendered for billing and administration, is $408,000. That totals $3.5 million. And the debt service, and I elaborated that on the memo I sent you, before the bands, it was going to be around $350,000 with debt service, but there are two bands for equipment that should have a principal and interest of around $40,000 should kick in this FY 15. There is a second one that is for the draft EIR and water distribution improvements, which I think the first interest payment is around $3,000. And in the discussion we had with the wastewater subcommittee, we just received the draft water master plan, and it's a large amount of recommendations of things to do. Clearly, because we're looking to go to MWR, we don't want to spend money, but there are some things we have to do. And as a placeholder, Mark and I are saying, we think it might be up to about half a million dollars. So, the interest on that, worst case is $10,000. So, if I add those three numbers together, the debt service adds up to $408,000. And we also have some proposed capital projects, FY 15, to illustrate that. If you look at the summary, the revenue estimate for FY 14 compared to the FY 15 expenses, it's not much difference. Slide 5. In your packet, Mark did an analysis of 13 years of water rates and what it actually was for the average family cost versus what it would have been if it was maybe a straight line or a more gradual approach. That would be enclosure. Enclosure 7 in your packet. One thing I noticed, it literally looks like it's about a 2.5% increase over that period of time. Knowing the estimated FY 15 budget and estimate of revenue for FY 15, did a series of calculations, that would be enclosure 8 of the packet I sent, and for the various rates, that would be the anticipated retained earnings. If we do nothing, we anticipate a deficit of $38,000 to...the FY 15 budget is roughly a 3.3% increase of FY 14. If you just match that, the anticipated retained earning is $117,000. And slide 6, the recommendations. For multiple reasons. One is, if you look at that glide path, the 2.5% per year, that seems to mimic what our actual costs are and costs to the average family. The 2.5% would yield a modest retained earnings. And at this time, there's some uncertainties relative early in the budget cycle, so we're recommending, or I'm recommending, a 2.5% increase for FY 15 for the Water Department. And that increase to the average homeowner is roughly $20 per year. There are a series of fees also that we have not adjusted for quite a while, so Mark and I are proposing some changes to those. When I have these here, I can distribute those. For example, right now, we charge $195 for a meter to install, and it actually costs us $299. So, we're looking to bump those up, because we can cover our costs.
It costs you $299 for the meter and...
Install.
You're talking about for labor. I don't...what is it? What's the $300 in tail? Or what's the...
The meter.
Yeah.
The rope for milk reed, the labor to install.
Yes.
So, again, we haven't updated these in quite a while.
Can I just request that we get a copy of current fees?
Yeah.
The highlighted is the...
I repeat this thing.
Thank you. The dark is the... We're posting the dark being within the form. Thank you.
Mr. Fode? So, you're asking that...I'm just going back to a 5 eighths inch meter again. It's $195 now, and you want to go to $300?
Right. Roughly, just to cover our costs.
No, I understand. Why is it the property owner's...I understand the meter. Well, I'm assuming this is if something happens to the meter.
This is strictly new installation, new construction. We charge for the meter installation. For a replacement meter, it's borne by the Water Department. If you look at, on the top, there's an administrative fee of $5 per bill. That's basically...that's to cover the cost of us going out and reading the bill, generating the bill, processing the collections. And also, a portion of that goes towards...
Mark, what do you do in the case of a frozen meter or a damaged meter? Is that the property owner's responsibility?
Well, determination has to be made. If it's frozen because the property owner didn't heat the building, then it's their responsibility to pay for it. If it's, you know, if there was damage, say, to a water hammer or something that caused the meter to explode, and it could be pointed back at us, then we would eat the cost of it. But if it's something, definitely the homeowner just, you know, caused the failure of a meter. And we have a business in town, it's a small business, but he doesn't heat his meter room, and we've been out there probably three winters out of the last five replacing a water meter.
Thank you. So, this will be the charge. For that. Mr. Prisco?
In regards to the fees, I can't argue with you. I'm not experienced enough to know, but it seems to make sense what you're trying to do. But you know, I argued pretty hard against this increase that we made back in 2011. I told you then, I thought it was extremely high. It was a significant amount of change percentage-wise on the rate payers at that time, and, you know, you were looking for...an estimate you had was to try to pay back $100,000 each year. But in two years, we paid back $436,000 with that rate change, which proves that I was right. It was too high. We paid back a lot more money than we had to in a very short period of time, and that's because we put such a significant increase on the taxpayer. And now, we're going to...you're coming back asking for 2.5% more when we already have an extreme increase that's paying far more...I mean, averages out over almost $220,000 a year, while we were looking to do something for $100. So, I don't...can you just help me? Am I missing it? Am I misunderstanding what you're trying to...
Well, due to that fact, Mr. Prisco, that's why we didn't raise the rates the last two years in a row, because clearly the revenue is in excess of the expenses. So, as we've seen, a drop of $100,000 in prior fiscal year, we're anticipating another $100,000 drop. So, we're getting it fine-tuned to get closer to that. Yes, it was surprisingly high. I agree. But not changing the rates has kind of brought that down to get close to what it really is, to break even.
But included in that...if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. Included in that rate increase, are some of these CIPs that you're considering a factor in part of that increase?
Yes.
Isn't this the wrong place to do that? I'm just... The CIP should go through the town meeting process, right?
Oh, nothing's approved for projects. Just for purposes of putting a rate together, we assume to place well over half a million dollars. Probably a lot less than that, but I had to start with a number just to get the debt service number to get to this.
And if anything, if anything that he puts in for a CIP request doesn't get approved, then that money would become retained earnings the following year.
Right.
So, well, he has to put something in there not knowing...because we're setting rates before we're setting rates before we're doing the CIP, so he has to assume something. And I think it's safe to assume that we are going to do some CIP projects.
No, I agree. I think we do.
With the information I have, Mr. Prisco, that's...I had to come up with an assumption. And it'll be a certain number. I think you were in the meeting, there's clearly...
Yeah, no, clearly.
We're not going to do all those repairs.
Oh, clearly.
But there are some ones that Mark identified as probably makes sense to do.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question. Appreciate it.
Mr. Ussery?
Just on these fee increases, are they more or less what the communities are getting for these same services? Are we behind? Are we...
Well, these haven't been updated since before my time. I'm not sure the last time they were updated, but the intent of this is to cover our exact costs. For example, like in the 5 eighths meter, it costs to buy the meter and all the privileges and put it in, $299. So, we're trying to just break even.
Okay.
The equipment rental at the bottom, those are actually our bid prices. We bid every year. Those were equivalent rates. The...I didn't change the fines consistent, but we are not out of, I guess, grossly out of whack with other communities, but no, I did not do a community by community analysis.
Oh, is that...you're in the midst of...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, you...I don't know. I mean, we have some...yeah, we have some that are same, some that are similar, some we don't do. Some that I think we don't do that we should do, so I think, you know, I don't think any of these are out of whack. I have a question, though. What's the system development charge?
System development charge? It's a charge we've charged for new home construction going back probably close to 15 years. The theory is that, say, Mr. Delaney owns a house. He's lived here for 50 years. He's paid his water bill for 50 years. He's paid for the infrastructure the Water Department has constructed over that 50 years. Say you come in as a new homeowner, you're getting an immediate benefit of the water storage tanks, the distribution system, the things that a lot of people in town have paid for. So, what we took was the cost of building, say, the new swamp pond tank, the cost of constructing the new water treatment plant at West Village, and amortized them and divided them over a number of buildable lots, and came up with a system development charge. It's basically, for lack of a better term, a buying charge. You know, they make you equivalent to somebody who's paid for capital and...
I like the term. I may use it. I may steal it.
Okay.
If that's okay.
We're talking about...
I'll put an asterisk. I'll put an asterisk. The theory is that, say, Mr. Delaney owns a house, he's lived here for 50 years, he's paid his water bill for 50 years, he's paid for the infrastructure the water department has constructed over that 50 years. Say you come in as a new homeowner, you're, you're getting an immediate benefit of the water, storage tanks, the, the distribution system, the things that a lot of people in town have paid for. So what we took was the, the cost to building, say, the new swamp pond tank, the cost to constructing the new water treatment plant at West Village, and amortized them and divided them over a number of buildable lots, and came up with a, a system development charge. It's basically, for lack of a better term, a buying charge. You know, they make you equivalent to somebody who's paid for capital.
I like, I like the term, I may use it, I may steal it.
Okay.
But we're talking about.
I'll put an asterisk, I'll put an asterisk next to it.
You're talking about the building of a new house, or?
Say, new subdivision.
Yes. You're not talking about Mr. Delaney moves out, someone moves into his house?
No, no. And in fact, if, you know, as to what the question with the meters, if someone does a tear down and builds a new house on the same lot, well, that, that doesn't get charged, the system development charge, because that house was already there, that person or whoever owned the house before already.
Paid for the.
Paid for the infrastructure, right. Strictly, it's strictly on new construction.
Number of finance committee members, former finance committee members right here. Anyone have any question?
No, I think that I would state that for a number of years, the town really didn't have much touch into waters, if you remember. Then about six or seven years ago, we increased the rates. And then about three years after that, we had the most recent increase. Part of it was a assumption that we needed to have some routine areas. We won't, we're not, we're not, it's already down. It seems to me that a many cost increases here are labor costs, et cetera. So the idea of hitting everybody every three years with this size increase as opposed to a small increase that realistically represents the actual increase cost to the business, it makes more sense to me. The finance committee will be meeting to discuss this two bone recommendation on Wednesday evening.
Mr. Fode? I just want to reiterate what she said, that the chair said of the finance committee, but it is, does make more sense that instead of doing spikes and then, and then valleys is to, is to try and, and I'm sure Mark's working and Dick are working on this right now, to try and come up with a level, you know, increase over the course of the next five, at least five years anyway. But I agree, it makes a lot of sense to do it that way. And that way, what Mr. Prisco said earlier regarding that huge spike that we got several years ago, we won't, we won't experience that again. Mr. Osier?
Do we have a recommendation from the water commissioners?
They meet Thursday.
They meet Thursday.
By this information only, there's several other people.
Yeah, no, I agree with what you said, I guess.
Mr. Prisco?
If I could just ask a favor, I knocked Dropbox under the W, if we could just add a new folder for water and add this information to it, plus what's in our meeting packet into that folder, would be really helpful to have one spot to go right to water and have this information, if that's possible.
Done.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding water rates? I'll continue this public hearing until I'm meeting on the 16th. Sixteen, two weeks from tonight, we'll meet again. I'll be following the FinCon meeting and the water briefing meeting, which will take place later this week.
Okay. May I just say one more thing to Mark and Dick? I really appreciate all the effort you guys are putting into trying to find alternative options for water for us. I know you guys put a tremendous amount of time in. I know the public probably doesn't know that, but I, it's good for people to know, if they're home listening, that we are trying to find alternatives, so these types of increases hopefully will be a little more controlled in the future with the options you guys are looking for, for the town. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sean, what's next, I'm sorry. We have a finance chief.
Can I, you're gonna get the presentation started?
Take a three-minute recess before resume, or we'll resume, we'll be with the fire chief
Three minutes, appreciate it.
Chief Water?
Thank you. I've been asked to come here tonight to do a quick budget, pre-budget presentation and discussion on the revenues that we have been obtaining through our EMS program and to revisit the fifth man and the cost of the fifth man and maybe answer some questions that are still in some of your minds as related to how much it would cost. So without that, we'll get going. I put together a little graph here that illustrates how much the ambulance revenues have increased from fiscal 12 to fiscal 13. And as you can see, in fiscal 10, we received 234,000, that's cleared. Fiscal 11, 253,000. Fiscal 12, 291. And then in fiscal 13, $628,000.
Chief? Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You're on a good stride, I don't want to break you, but.
Don't worry, I'll get right back.
Is there a way to break it down between receipts for basic and advanced?
There is.
Do we have that?
Do we have that?
We have combined receipts.
But, but there is a way to.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
This is mostly basic.
I would, I would gather that, but I'd like to see a breakdown.
Yeah, well, let's, let's remember that we started the paramedic service on April 9th fiscal 12, right?
Right.
So our first year, we only got two months out of it. So we're getting 200 to 200 and, I don't know, $70,000 was BLS. So you're just splitting that, it's about a 50-50 rate, our, our ambulance calls.
And it's pretty close to what we get.
Projected.
Yeah.
So now, as you look at this, we started receiving rates, now this is in fiscal 13, went from April 9th, 2012, to July 31st, 2013, and you're saying there's a couple of years there that are in 2012. But let's remember, it takes four months to get some of our revenue. So as that revenue came in, it was actually in 13. So remember, we're always behind a little bit by collecting our ALS rates. You can see down the bottom that we had receipts of $654,000. We paid out ComStar 4%, $26,000, and that netted us $628,000 for that time period. And this is fiscal 14. To date, from 7/26/13 to 11/8/13, we've billed out $250,000, paid out $10,000, and we netted $240,000. It's projected to make $640,000 this year. Projected. Now, if you remember from my budget presentation, our ComStar billing agent said that if all things stay the same, and we all know that that can change at any minute with everything that's going on in the medical field, but if all things stay the same, we're estimated to make $600,000. And from the numbers that we have here right now, we're up about $640,000.
That's a gross number, right?
Yeah.
That, right there, 240 is net.
Well, no expenses associated with being able to provide this a level of service.
No, that's just, that's a.
Just revenue.
Okay.
Less the fee paid to ComStar.
Right.
Question I have, Bill, is if, if we look at FY13, I know the billing is skewed.
Yes.
What percentage of ALS calls did we cover in that period of time?
You mean, the percentage of ALS calls, or the percentage of ALS calls that the North Reading Fire Department handled? Those are two, two different questions.
No, I'm looking at, I'm assuming that North Reading Fire Department didn't handle all the ALS calls.
We handled, I would say, pretty close to 85% of those calls.
That was the question I asked.
Okay. And that's only.
So it was 85%.
That's correct. That's only gonna get better as the three firefighters that are just finishing up the ALS program get assigned their shifts and go through their perception.
Yeah.
We're gonna have more people on staff, so that number's gonna go up. Now, the number of ALS calls we have, do I see about 50% right now? 50% of.
That's holding up roughly.
That's what, so that's what we're doing.
So the biggest concern that I have, again, by the way, you guys have done a great job.
They are doing a great job.
We couldn't have asked for anything better. The, the issue, the concern I have associated with our rate of spending is, one, we can't afford to get ahead of ourselves, two, is that we got, and you've mentioned it, the Affordable Care Act hanging over our heads and what, what's going on. And we already know that, at least in the analysis that we did early on, that about 50% of our ambulance calls, and they were BLS at the time, were what you call Medicare, Medicaid, Mass Health.
Right.
And those payments were about 50% of our billing rate, what we receive back versus 90, 95% from the Blue Crosses and.
Correct.
Of the wood, so.
We're gonna have to wait and see what happens. I'm not sure what's gonna happen.
No, I understand.
Wish I could tell you, but I, I don't.
But we are gonna have to watch that very closely.
That is correct. But optimistically, according to ComStar, if things remain the same, we're gonna be at 600,000 plus. And our projections, this was done by us, is about 640, if things stay true.
That's great.
And I can't, I can't answer if they will or they won't. Okay?
When you rolled out ALS, how many paramedics do we have at that time?
At this time?
No, when you first rolled it out.
FY 2012.
We had five paramedics.
How many do you have today?
Five, six, seven, how many paramedics on the call?
Five, a few on the calls.
Right, so we have eight, eight paramedics total. With three, we're almost done with paramedic school, so that'll bring it to 11. And the new hires that we're attempting to bring it on now will be 13.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So now, the next question is the cost per men, the cost for five, five guys per shift. Now, I went, as you recall, I went to the budget meeting last year and I presented some figures that were put together by the finance department, and there were some questions relating to that. So we've redone the figures again, the finance department, and if you just take a look at the increase side, four men versus five men, is an increase of $160,000, 838. Now, that's down from the 207 that we asked about, that's because the first year costs are gone. All their equipment, their radios and everything are already, already in this budget here. Now, the overtime for the four-man shift is 777,000, and for the five-man shift is 782,000. It's an increase of $4,000. Total personnel costs, 2,374,000. Five men, 2,540,000, for a total increase of $165,000. Now, these numbers have gone over at least three or four times by finance, and these are the numbers that they are coming up with. Now, if you look at fiscal year 2015, up there in red, the most important thing to note up there and the reason why many things are starting to decrease is that the hourly overtime rate, the average hourly overtime rate, will be decreasing by $1.51 an hour. So we all have lower regular hourly rate for the new hires, which reduces the hourly overtime rate. They will get no longevity pay for new hires for the first five years, that also decreases it. No specialty pay for new hires, and no education pay until they get a degree. So that's why the numbers have gone down. Now, an increase in overtime hours, the vacation, personal and callback are all on the left-hand side.
Bill?
Yes.
Before you go on.
Okay.
I'm having trouble digesting the $4,854 is the only increase. I would, I would feel much more comfortable if I could see the additional overtime hours required for the additional men.
The additional overtime hours would be personal time, no vacation in the first year, I think that's actually.
Well, see, that's why I, I need to look at that, because.
That's on, it's actually.
It's here, it's, it's here.
So, the overtime hours, can I see?
Sorry.
The.
Those are the hours down below there.
Right here for the four-man shift is 16,393.
Yeah.
If we have a five-man shift, it's 17,049. That, those are in hours.
Those are hours?
Yes.
Yeah, it says overtime hours.
Right here, so 16,393 hours, and then 17,000 hours. So that's, that's the difference between a four-man shift and a five-man shift in overtime hours.
Okay, so the difference, the delta is the additional overtime hours for the additional men.
Right, so that's the change right here, the 656 hours.
All right, thank you.
Chief, you, and you said, before FY 2015, it doesn't include the vacation hours, because they're not.
Well, they don't, for the contract, they don't get their first week's vacation until after a year on the job.
Could, could we just, give me a ballpark idea how much this would go up if?
Of the hours of the year.
Yeah, 288.
Each one gets 96 hours after completion of one year.
Okay. So 96 hours, you'd have to add, multiply roughly by that $45 rate?
That's the average overtime rate for FY 15.
Okay.
But keep in mind that this is based on no cost of living and, and no contract, so this is current rates, not any, you know, changes.
Are those rates just the base rate? They don't include stipends and things like that?
Well, at this point, they wouldn't have any. Right?
Right.
Wanted to make sure.
Right. So, but in what year would you have to factor in costs like that into it? After how many years? Well, after the first five years, that extra week's vacation would go up. Specialty pay would be based on whether or not they were awarded a specialist position and were entitled to it. And education would be something that would be based on the individual, whether he or she decides to get education. So those are difficult questions to answer, but if someone walked through the door with a bachelor's degree tomorrow and got hired, then they would be, they would get that educational bonus.
I think we're gonna make a three-year projection just there.
Still looking at it.
Yeah.
I prefer the all the educated myself.
I'm sorry, Mr. Prisco, I didn't hear you.
No, I was, I was talking to Mr. Osier, sorry.
Okay.
So, the comparison for 14 five-man shift to 15 five-man shift, a full year versus three-quarter of a year, not to just read you the numbers off the chart, but it's an increase of about $70,000. Overtime increase of $11,000 for a total personnel cost of $80,000. Overtime increase of $11,000 for a total personnel cost of $8,000. Now, there's little notes here on the left-hand side, the left margin. It was assumed that the new hires would not start until fiscal, I'm sorry, until October 1st, 2013. And we all know that that hasn't happened yet. So, the salary was only for three-quarters of a year. In fiscal '14, overtime was level-funded, as if there were no new hires put on the job at all. So, we don't have the money for callback, we don't have the money for personal time. It's not included in the budget. The overtime budget was level-funded from the previous year. And as you were asking before, I think it was Mr. Prisco, the new employee time off is as follows, and it's listed right there after one year. So, it was one slide later.
That's helpful, thank you.
Now, I do, I would like to say that I'm a strong proponent of 524-7, you all know that.
Shocking.
Shocking, correct. The two-in, two-out rule is extremely important to me as the fire chief. And, you know, I would ask for your consideration where we are able, at this point in time, to fund this evolution on our own, I would ask that you would think long and hard and hopefully give us the opportunity to fund 524-7 and make sure the firefighters and the civilians are safe all the time. So, basically, that's all I have for the pre-budget presentation that I was asked for. Is there anything else?
Well done.
Thank you.
I, I, so one thing I would like at the budget session, you've provided it before, I just wanna make sure it's in there again. Can you provide us the number of calls you're getting, morning hours, afternoon hours, and the evening hours, so we can see where, where the high volume is?
I believe that the firehouse program can give you that information, so the answer's yes.
That would, I think, be helpful.
Yep.
And I know you've done it before, so I'm a little slow on this one, but in terms of callbacks, all right? You have two different types of callbacks?
Station coverage and callbacks, yes.
Okay.
The station coverage will not change. Ambulance calls and those things, they really, they go up or down.
Let's talk about station coverage.
Okay.
All right. Give me an example.
Ambulance goes out, two people go to the hospital, we call in two guys to respond to the next incident.
So, just two guys come in?
Correct.
All right, all right. What's the other type of?
Callback. We get a call for a house fire, everyone's phone or beeper goes off. Everybody goes back to the station to man the other apparatus, as I described on that slide. We need 13 people in X amount of time. That's how that works. So, everybody's entitled to go back, man the second engine, man the ladder truck, and man the ambulance, and then they go to the call.
So, everyone comes back. You have-
Correct.
How many firefighters now, or lost that?
We have 19 full-time firefighters, and we have about nine qualified fighters.
So, you get a house fire, three guys go out?
Correct.
Call everyone back, and everyone comes back?
Correct.
And of all, 15 come back, they're all in a firehouse, do they all get a certain number of hours overtime?
Three hours pay.
For all 15 of them?
All of them. Contractually.
Okay.
Is it, is there something else other than a house fire that would require them all to come back as well?
Oh, sure, we could have a car accident.
Okay, so a car accident.
People need to be extricated from vehicles. We could have a hazardous materials incident. We could have a water rescue. We could have an incident where the captain needs manpower for something that I'm not describing. You know, so if we need to strike a box, people closest to the call sometimes go to the call. The rest of the people go to the station and man the apparatus.
Appreciate that. Finance committee, I know you're here. You have any questions, comments at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Faia, thank you. Think we go back to license renewals? Is that where we're at?
Yes.
Second, please, here we go, sorry. Here we go. Back to license renewals.
Are we on the common vicula ones or alcohol?
Let's see, we did, uh-
Mr. Foti, yes. Chairman, I move to renew the following: common vicula, all alcohol license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. China Cuisine, Inc., Gin Gin Gourmet Restaurant, Great American Tavern.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who is zero, one absent?
Are we signing tonight?
Yes.
Yeah. Do that later.
No, no, start it now.
Thank you, Mr. Foti.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following: package store, all alcohol license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. East Gate Liquors, Buffalo Beverage and Redemption Corp., One Stop Liquors, Inc.
Second.
The motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who is zero, one absent?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following: package store, wine and malt beverage license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Christopher's Market, Convenience Plus, Hess Express, number 21223, Tadashi Food Shops.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who is zero, one absent?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following: Class 1 licenses to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Ryan Duchek, DBA National Sales LLC, Melconian Subaru, Inc.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Who is zero, one absent?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following: Class 2 licenses to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. A&amp;J Motors, Inc., Brian Duchek, DBA National Sales LLC, Green Via Classic Motors, North Reading Auto Sales, Inc., P&amp;T Auto Sales, Inc., Nika, Inc., DBA Route 28 Motors.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Foti, go first, please.
No, 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 go ahead.
Why don't you go? Go ahead.
I'd like to, let's see if we can maybe redo the motion a little bit. I'd like to remove one of the, request these out and have it under a separate motion. That would be, I guess you called Nikke, Nikke, Inc., doing business as Route 28 Motors, so we can have a separate discussion on that one. Let's-
Else?
Is that a motion?
Make a motion to amend?
Make a motion to amend.
Second.
To strike Nikke, Inc., doing business as Route 28 Motors from the motion. You handle it as a separate motion.
I seconded that.
Okay, move the motion, move the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just gotta pull that out.
Let's try a line through it.
Yeah. On the original motion, any discussion, further discussion?
On the amended motion?
On the amended.
The amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, you can deal with that separately.
Do you want me to make a motion on the one we removed, or do you want to just pass over?
Go ahead. Let's just deal with it so it all stays together.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following: Class 2 license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Nikke, Inc., doing business as Route 28 Motors.
Second.
Make a motion to approve?
Correct.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Foti?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you recall, this is the gentleman who bought this, less than a year ago, if I'm correct, Mr. Valiakonis. And there were some issues, there were some questions raised at that time. And I felt that we should give this gentleman the benefit of the doubt, being that, you know, he was not the owner of the establishment prior to that. However, I did keep a close look at this from day one, and I can assure you that on more occasions than not, as a matter of fact, the beginning, I was keeping a log. This gentleman exceeded his maximum car for sale and cars allowed on the premises on numerous occasions. As a matter of fact, the town minister and I, and I believe the police chief, traded numerous emails on this. So, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not gonna be in favor because I wanted to give him the benefit of the doubt. I wanted to support him. Unfortunately, he did not heed our warning when he was here and chose to ignore our, our request to abide by the conditions. So, that's, I'll speak on myself, I'm opposed to it.
Mr. Prisco?
Last year, when this came up for renewal, I voted against it because the individual that was taking over the ownership has worked for this corporation prior to taking it over for many years. So, he knew of the issues that we had, we mentioned them to him, and as Mr. Foti has stated, he didn't do anything about it. If anything, I think the situation got worse over there, but there was clearly no effort on his part to try to rectify the concerns we brought to him. And this board, four-to-one vote, because you really thought he was gonna take this seriously. He did not take it serious. So, I'm also not gonna be voting in favor of granting the Class 2 license to this establishment.
Well, I would tend to agree, but I agree with both of you in terms of, we had a discussion with this proprietor. He didn't adhere to what we had stated to him, nor what he agreed to do. However, I believe probably about 45 days ago, Mr. Valiakonis, there was some information brought forward to the town that actually allowed him to keep a greater number of vehicles on-site for sale in addition there to a number of vehicles on-site for repair. In light of that information, I'd be in favor of granting the license again. Because unfortunately, a year ago, or whenever the gentleman was here, less than a year ago, we didn't have complete information. So, I think we have a problem if we don't renew the license because he's, appears as though he's in compliance as to what the license allows in terms of total vehicles, both for sale and repair. And all his personal property taxes have been paid, the license fee has been paid. Essentially, if you don't grant the license, we shut a business down and move a business out of town. And it's a business that's been there for quite a number of years. Mr. Valiakonis?
Mr. Chairman, thank, thank you for bringing that up. I wanted to make reference to the conditions. There are a total of 16 vehicles that may be displayed for sale at any one time. So, that's the license that, requirement that's been on the license that you've seen in the past. What we did was, we did some research, we went back, and we were able to determine that there was a ZBA special permit issued in 1983. And then, there was a case that was litigated in Woburn District Court in 1999. And as a result of that court ruling, there was a decision that came out that said there's a total of 26 vehicles allowed on the premises, exclusive of customer vehicles, of which 24 are outside and two may be inside. So, of the 26 total vehicles that are allowed on-site, no more than 16 may be allowed for sale at any one time. I did speak with the owner. He did acknowledge the fact that he did exceed the 26 vehicles at times. What he has done is he's made a commitment that he intends to seek off-site storage in order to be in compliance with the 26-vehicle limit that's been established on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Valiakonis. Mr.?
My thought was to table this and request that the vendor, the business owner, whoever is responsible, attend our next meeting and testify why they should continue their license. I think that, you know, that sort of is the middle ground associated with the fact that the ZBA granted them something other than what we thought. And it sort of serves notice that we're keeping an eye on it and maybe get an amendment that will make it easier going downstream if they're in violation to-
And I respect that, I have no problem doing that. I can assure you, though, that I can, I can show you on Dumasuk he has re-exceeded 31 counts.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah. But I'm willing to-
Well, in light of the fact that we have this other issue, if we didn't have this other relevance, uh-
That's fine, that's a motion, I'll say.
Well, I have, it would really have to start with me, you have to remove my motion, which I'm not interested in doing.
Your motion was to-
Approve it.
Was the, your motion to-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against.
Yeah, I assume that.
Yes, so why can't there be a motion? What are you saying? Why can't propose a different motion?
No, I would have to remove my motion first, or you already, I mean-
We haven't voted on his motion, although, it could be amended and another amendment.
Right. Could get amended.
That's fine.
Right.
Yep. We've been down this road before. If that's what the majority would like to do, then I guess I will acquiesce, but I think you are wasting your time.
Well, let's find out what the majority thinks. I'll make a motion that we table your motion and ask for the business owner to attend our next meeting to justify the request for a license renewal.
I'll say, confirms a discussion.
Any further discussion?
I just, I'll just explain, I just, I wanna give the guy an opportunity to come in and explain. I mean, I was just, I was outspoken in favor of giving it to him seven months ago, however long it was, because I felt that he deserved an opportunity, he shouldn't be responsible for the sins of, of his employer when he was working there. But unfortunately, he's committed the same sins. I would like to give him the opportunity to come in here and, and explain himself to us. I think it's fair.
I need to. Any further discussion?
I guess I'm bringing it up because if this ZBA thing was never granted, then I would be voting no.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct, I agree with you. Anything further? Any amended motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Three, one, one absent, motion carries. So, Mr. Valiakonis, there'll be notification by September 5th going out to the license holder. He does show up, if he's listening.
Right, exactly. Overripe notification.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following: Class 3 licenses to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Duchek, DBA National Sales LLC.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who is zero, one absent? You still have liveries in the, uh?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move to renew the following: livery license to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Metro Town Car, North Reading Transportation.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who is zero, one absent?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following: automatic amusement device licenses to expire December 31st, 2014, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
The motion?
We state it.
You state the vendor.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, public genius.
Thank you, no, no problem.
I was just reading.
Sorry.
I wasn't listening.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who is zero, one absent? Well, it gets us to appointments and reappointments? Keep going, gentlemen, this is great. Mike, can you go with those?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Foti has assigned some. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following names for appointment/reappointment as members of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty sixteen, for two openings. James Dimitri, Ten Oskar's Way, incumbent. Paul O'Leary, Five Adrian Drive, incumbent.
Motion is second. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah, I would rather the board maybe address this when Mr. O'Leary gets back.
He'll recuse himself.
I understand, or, well, I guess, I would just bring up my concern right now, because, you know, I attended all the public meetings associated with what was going on with the school project with the Butters, and I really felt that there was definitely a lot of unprofessionalism on behalf of that entire board, especially the chairperson at that time sitting in for Mr. O'Leary. But we'll have to address that another day. But I also think there was some level of unprofessionalism by one of the candidates here, and I just think, I can't in good conscience agree, based on what I witnessed. You know, there was some things going on that was very unprofessional, and I just don't, you know, these people are appointed by us, they represent this board, and I think what was happening is very bad representation of this board. And I just would like the opportunity to maybe speak with Mr. O'Leary before we have a, take a vote on this. I, you know, I need to get some assurances from him that this isn't gonna happen anymore. I know that he recused himself from the discussions, the chairperson, but I witnessed here in this very room, up, working with the board members, guiding them, and, you know, he's supposed to be recusing himself, and I just have a real strong objection to that. He should recuse himself, and he didn't. So, I'm asking you to just at least hold off till I have an opportunity to speak to Mr. O'Leary about Mr. Paul O'Leary. It's up to you, you guys can vote it any way you want.
He can defend the form of motion. He can move to table this, just like.
I move to table, yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to table.
I have a motion to table the motion relative to reappointment of these two members of the Board of Appeals.
Do I have a second?
I will second, and as, for the purpose of discussion.
Discussion?
State the reason why. So, just so I'm clear on what your intent was, you wanted an opportunity to talk to Steve O'Leary or Paul?
Paul O'Leary.
Okay, okay.
I know Mr. O'Leary, Steve O'Leary has to recuse himself from this discussion.
Yeah, no, okay, I.
Has nothing to do with him.
No, but you had mentioned you wanted to wait for him the first time, so that's why I asked.
But what I witnessed was inappropriate and is wrong, and, you know, and I, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Paul O'Leary brings a lot of value to this town, he's a very hard-working person, but what I witnessed was inappropriate, it's wrong, and it wasn't in the best interests of this town. And I have to make an appointment here, a reappointment, within good conscience. And what I witnessed was not, not an individual that recused himself from this, that subject. Regardless of how you feel about how it turned out, or how it's gonna turn out, it doesn't matter. You know, we have to follow the rules and the regulations and the policies and procedures, and that clearly wasn't done. And, and I just, I just need to have, he needs to hear this from me, and we need to have a discussion. I'd like to get some assurances from him, this isn't gonna continue to go forward, or he can explain to me where I am mistaken, in my opinion, on this. But I think we should, the board has the, we should all have an understanding of what it means for recusing yourself from that discussion, the way he handled himself. Am I wrong, or is he wrong? Now, if anybody else wants to jump in, if they witnessed the same thing I did, but I can only speak for myself, and I'd like the opportunity to address it with him one on one.
I'm all in favor of giving you that opportunity.
Yeah, I, if you have some, something you feel needs to be addressed prior to the appointment, then I think you should have that opportunity anyways. I'll agree to, we're tabling it and addressing it at the next meeting.
I would have done it sooner, but, you know, this just came up to us, and I hadn't had opportunity to make that effort.
That's fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, on the motion to table this, vote on appointment/reappointments to the ZBA. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent. We lost her for a minute. Until she gets back, she's coming.
You wanna hit the heat, Craig, if you wouldn't mind? It's getting a little cold in here for people. I feed her, I feed her freezing right now.
Oh, oh, it's hot, yeah. Will you hear for the motion to amend the original motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we took a vote on the amended motion to table this vote on reappointments, appointments to the ZBA, and the vote was four zero, one absent. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following name for appointment/reappointment as an associate member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. John D. Nelson, Seven Adrian Drive, Associate, incumbent.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
On, Mr. Prisco, do you have an issue here as well?
No.
Okay. On the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following names for appointment/reappointment as member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Thomas Romeo, Seventy-four North Street.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place in nomination the following name for reappointment as detail constable for a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty fourteen. Jerry Berg.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Martin Fair as the East Middlesex Mosquito Control Project Representative for a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty sixteen.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Given his title within the town, I think it's the most appropriate person to be, this representative.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Barbara Stats as the State Ethics Commission Liaison for a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Mary Ann McKay as Town Treasurer for a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
No, sir. I'll just add that I think she's done an absolutely terrific job, five-plus years of being on this board, so, pleasure, I recommend her reappointment.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, one absent. Don't leave us, what are the others?
That's it.
Amazing.
Will assist to the town administrator's report?
Sure.
Mr. Valiakonis?
As I reported to the board by email, the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen tax rate was approved in record time by the Department of Revenue back on November twenty-second. That comes from your action to set the tax rate at the board's meeting two weeks ago. Tax bills will be prepared and will be going in the mail no later than the thirty-first of this month. It's required under statute, and the bills will be, actual bills will be due on February first. I do not anticipate any particular problems with that, however, it is possible that as in the process of transitioning to our bills being printed under munis, that we've encountered some resistance from one of the vendors, but I'm certain and hopeful that that will be worked out and not result in any delay in printing of tax bills. And if it does, I'll be happy to inform the board. The fiscal two thousand and fifteen capital budget requests are due into the Finance Department on December sixteenth. That includes updates of the multi-year CIPC. Capital items, as we all know, are defined by those particular items or projects costing in excess of twenty thousand dollars and having a useful life of five or more years. That would include things like architectural studies and feasibility studies, which are typically done within a separate law article at town meeting. We have scheduled CPR training for our municipal employees coming up on December fourth and eleventh. This is part of the efforts to include, provide for a safe workplace for our employees. The town has applied for a grant under the MIA program to train municipal employees on mental health first aid, so in the event that this grant is received, it's an outspring of the community intervention team. We will provide this training to our employees at no cost, and as I understand, in speaking with Mrs. Preney and with Amy Lockowitz, the Youth Services Director, they feel that this program would prove to be extremely valuable to our employee workforce. And then the last item is, is I did report to the board by email, that administration is looking into the Commonwealth Connect program as an opportunity for residents to report up to us via electronic means on quality of life issues. Joe, I don't know if you have this in your community or not?
We do, we don't use the Commonwealth Connect, we use C Click Fix.
Same one.
Okay.
Same one.
Yeah, it works out very well.
So, this would work through C Click Fix, and we think it's a good way of not only giving residents an opportunity of reporting to us, but a way of us to kind of track and log in requests to determine how well departments are performing and being responsive to citizen inquiries.
I will say, it is time-consuming for the departments.
No doubt.
Because you have to acknowledge that you received them, and you have to go back and close them out, but it does provide a way for residents to, especially as they're driving by on their smartphone, something like that, to report something that they see. Right. I would suggest, though, that you strongly stress the importance that if something is an emergency, that it, that it be called in, because sometimes those things may sit there for a day or two also, if they're not looked at.
We, I forgot what I was gonna say about it, but the plan would be, the program has merit, and it's really, I've asked the IT department to take a look, closer look at it. We would include the cost of it in the FY two thousand and fifteen budget, because it's a recurring cost, you buy it to a service, and we use the service on a yearly basis. My recollection is the cost is somewhere in the range of about five thousand dollars a year. So, the cost is fairly minimal, but the return and the opportunity to gauge and use it as a tool for citizenry is invaluable. Thank you.
Mr. Valiakonis, you also put something in our agenda notes that proprietors of Senate Cafe had put in a request to reconsider the board's vote.
I did, and I'm glad that you brought that up, I see that Mr. and Mrs. Del Greco were here this evening, and what, Mr. Del Greco has requested is that the board discuss whether it wishes to have on its next agenda on December sixteenth, a reconsideration of the license vote, granting a wine and malt license at this particular location. Not asking for a vote of the board this evening, but merely a consensus as to whether the board wishes this matter to be on the agenda for an opportunity to debate, discuss, and vote at the meeting on December sixteenth.
I'll, Mr. Prisco, say.
My, my understanding, this request was based on the fact that a new parking plan has been put together, which I've not seen.
I have, yeah.
Nor have I, and nor did I ask the proponents to bring it forward within this forum. If you decide to consider, reconsider, then I know that they would be happy to bring it forward for your next meeting.
So.
This is.
So, the request is based, it's my understanding, the request is based on, on the fact that they, and there was a lot of criticism about the parking, that they come up with a new plan for parking. That's.
Having digested what went on two weeks ago, when the board voted on this license, I would suggest to the Del Grecos that this plan should include proper signage for your handicap spots, your employee parking spots, you'll have to do some working with your landlord in terms of identifying, or specifically having signage for tenant parking, and I would encourage you to make certain that the number of parking spots are of legal size that are identified by your engineer. I'm just listening to what two of the members that voted against, based upon parking, what I'm hearing. I think it'd be a misstep if you came before us, if you wanna put your best foot forward. I think at a minimum, that's what you need to do. I'm not telling you what to do, but unless that's done, I don't know what Mr. Prisco or Mr. Foti may do, but I think, listening here last, two weeks ago, that's what they may be looking for. It's really not open for public discussion at this point, it's just for the board to consider whether or not we wanna put it on our agenda. We will consider that tonight and take a position on that, but if you don't think you can have those things done by December sixteenth, I think you may wanna consider asking us to not put it on the agenda. I'm not, I'm not speaking for them, I'm just basing my statements on what I heard them both say two weeks ago. They can speak for themselves better than I can, but I would, I would do that if I were you, so I don't know if you're in that position to do that. But, board members, I don't know how everyone else feels, if they wish for us to put it on, we'll put it on for reconsider, I vote in favor of putting it on for reconsideration.
I guess my recommendation would be that you could make this request for the next meeting, or the meeting after, or the meeting after, but if you're going to make a request to be on our agenda for reconsideration, you need to be fully prepared, and basically, you heard the, those that voted against it, and you heard the concerns of the police department, you heard the concerns of even those that voted for it, and it would seem to me that if you can pull all that together, and you wanna come before us at our next meeting, fine, and if not, certainly can happen any other date, but if you're unprepared and come before us, you're just gonna get shot down, that's your last shot at this round, I would say. And I'm just basing it on my, my reading of the board members.
Mr. Valiakonis, is there a timeframe in which they needed to come before us to request to reconsider, in a time by which the board has to act on that?
No, though the law merely provides that they have an option to appeal to the ABCC.
Correct.
That option has been exercised, we've not heard back from the ABCC relative to a hearing, so at any time, the board may reconsider its action.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't know how the other two board members feel about putting them on the agenda if they wish is for us to consider it two weeks from tonight.
Mr. Valiakonis, just, correct me if I'm wrong, if we put them on the agenda for two weeks, one of the opponents would still have, one of the opponents of the board would still have to make a motion to reconsider?
I believe that's correct.
And does that have to be seconded by someone who voted against it?
No, it may be seconded by any member.
And I would like to give, I think we have to, I don't know if we have to, regardless of whether we have to.
That's supposed to be the next thing.
Or we should. Or we should, and I would request this, if it comes on the agenda, notification has to go out to all those abutters. I don't want to do this in the back end, give a notice to them.
But we're not reopening the public hearing. We closed the public hearing. We're not having another public hearing.
It actually has to be a public, if they're presenting.
It does.
New information to us.
Right.
And it has to be, so I don't know whether or not we can do it.
I don't think it's a good idea to do it too.
I don't think we can do it too. It has to be as public an, we have to give a notice.
We do, and we would.
Because they're asking to present more evidence that supports their position. So I think at the earliest, it could be the first meeting after the meeting. It gives the Del Grecos time to think whether or not they're in a position, are you ready? And to let us know when we can put it on the agenda.
Well, I have a little bit, I think there's still an issue, there's a hurdle here, okay? In order for us to consider their requests for a public hearing, it would seem to me that we have to have some information regarding why they want it. And I think we can make a decision at our next meeting, maybe, as to whether or not we would consider a public hearing. Or is it that they can make a request and we have to abide by it?
You don't have to.
I don't know what the process is.
Good question.
Or you just let it go to appeal.
Mr. Valiakonis, this question is for Mr. Masary. How, what are we to consider? Public hearing's closed, once made a decision, but for us to consider having another public hearing, put us in a position to reconsider our vote, we would have to consider some new information.
We agree.
Is that appropriate?
Apologize.
That's okay.
I've inhaled, I think, a paperclip or something along the way. So I was thinking is that we need some information from the Del Grecos that would make us feel that it's appropriate to schedule another public hearing. So perhaps the information that they have could be forwarded to the board for consideration in our next meeting, at which point we can determine whether or not we want to schedule a public hearing for sometime in January or whenever.
Were you asking for them to present in a summary form what they intend to do, or you were looking to consider, say if they did a new parking plan that's certified by the engineer?
Well, you know, I mean, if we can go back in history to the appeal, right, they make the appeal, the, as I recall, the Alcoholics Beverage Commission threw it back on us, and they made some changes that we then reconsidered. They asked us to reconsider this whole thing. So I, my question to Greg was, are we locked into going to the appeal process, or can they present something to the board that would make us want to schedule another public hearing? I mean, I think they can present the same information they presented at the public hearing. I don't see an issue with that. The public hearing is to get the input of the neighbors and everybody else, and have them have an opportunity to present their feelings about the proposal.
I just want to make sure that's accurate. I just don't want us to make a misstep in this process.
No, I understand.
That harms us all, because that's a problem for the applicant.
But I mean, I'm not prepared to say, even though I was a supporter of their proposal, right, to say we should have another public hearing based on new information, because I haven't seen any new information.
Yeah, I think it makes it difficult for Mr. Prisco, myself, and Mr. Larry to say yes in favor. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, as of today, nothing's changed.
Right.
Mr. Valiakonis, you don't see any issue with the applicant providing us with whatever information they wish for us to consider a new public hearing?
I believe that is highly appropriate, and as Secretary Masary suggested, that's the appropriate course of action.
Thank you. All right, so that's what we'll do. So between now and next week, you need to provide the town administrator whatever information you wish this board to consider, or will consider two weeks from tonight, is whether or not we will conduct another public hearing. Okay? That fair enough? Gives you a little more time to do whatever you think you need to do.
As a proposal or as job done?
I'm going to leave it to you to determine what you want to present to us.
I would like to present it as a proposal, and make sure that I'll, you know, keys crossed, eyes dotted, so you visually can see our intentions.
You determine what you want to do. You know, you're coming before this board to ask this board to essentially reconsider the vote.
Yes.
So with that, you determine what you think is sufficient enough to get this board to vote in favor of a new public hearing.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
You're wondering what I'm doing here.
I am.
Yeah, curious, aren't you?
I am.
Well, I.
I'll go back to public comment.
Huh?
Want me to bring the microphone or?
I came to bring glad tidings and good news, because I didn't see any of you yesterday at the festivities in the center of town. So I came to invite you all, including Mr. Valiakonis and Mr. Turras.
I was there, I'm still drying up. Everybody had a hat on.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you a private tour with refreshments of all the historic buildings, because I want you to see what we've accomplished in the Damon Tavern before I ask you for money.
Ah, when are you going to ask for money?
No, the.
I've known her too long.
The second floor has been refurbished, three in rooms that the doors were closed when the inn was closed in 1880. They shut the doors when the stagecoach stopped running and never opened them again.
Mr. Jones, have you seen it since then, since you last saw it when it closed?
So the Historical Society kicked in some money from a fund that they had, and had them repaint it at their own cost, and donated the antique furnishings that they had in their collection, and furnished them as they would have been for stagecoach stop. And we opened them up to the public yesterday, and people were amazed by it. So you can go in there and see the oil lamps and the chamber pots and the works, and the bedding, the works, it's all in there, it's marvelous. People were blown away by it. And we put a barrier at the ballroom doors, but they could peek their heads in and see the murals. And that was really mind-boggling. So that was, it was a thrill for everybody. So they saw all of that, and then they went on and saw the Putnam House, and the school house, and the Flint House, and got a tractor ride by Mark Hall in the meantime, and saw the information on the Farm Museum. So North Reading's really on the map, and other historical societies are quite envious of what we've done, and I think you guys should be proud too, so we're kind of happy at what we've done at no cost to the town. So we'd like you to see.
That's appreciated.
What's going on. So if you can possibly, before the 16th, coordinate your calendars in any time, any day, morning, noon, and night, that you can spare about an hour or so, let me know, and we'll get our troops together, and we'll escort you around there and get you in and out, and just show you what we've done, what we've accomplished, and we'd be really happy to share it with you, so that when we at least talk to you about it, or you read something about it in the paper or on Facebook, we're on Facebook, when you read about it, you know what, you've seen it, and you know what we're talking about, okay?
Thank you very much.
Please take advantage of it. We really want to see you.
I will.
Okay?
I'm sure the board members will too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always nice to see you. That gets us to all doing business. Mr. Masary?
We did have a wastewater, water meeting, I guess it was mostly water. Greg, those documents that we handed out in paper form. Could we get them put into Dropbox?
Yes.
Can we make a request of Dick or consultants? Was.
Talking about the materials that you reviewed over the last one or two minutes.
Right.
Correct, yeah, there was a lot of great information.
Very, very good information.
Yeah.
Very interesting. In fact, this should be a presentation to the entire board scheduled.
Right.
But it would be useful to have that put in the water folder or in Dropbox.
Done.
And the only other thing.
Actually, I think it's a great idea regarding the presentation to the full board. I would suggest that probably happened before CIP process starts.
Yes.
So. I don't know where we can get it. I think it's a good.
When does the CIP process start roughly?
We have a meeting next meeting.
I was going to, I was going to make a request that we, you know, put a placeholder in there until we get our handles on exactly what we want to do. This would be coming out of water capital. But the good news is we can move this thing along.
That's great.
Pretty impressive, the work that they did. And there was also a second report that was done on where we stand with our storm order, and how far along, and there was a couple of interesting maps in terms of the number of locations that they've tested, and how that all intertwines within the town that we're obligated under federal law to deal with.
Well, and maybe if I could just add to that, just as a little fear warning to some out there, that, you know, this review of our wastewater, our storm drains and all, they did find that some people are pumping in some gray water into our storm water, which means they probably have their washer and, the washing machines pumping into our storm drain. So, you know, people are doing that, and they're listening, and they hear about this. They probably should work really hard right now to rectify that issue before the town has to take any action. But it is happening. We know the streets, we know pretty much where it is, but I think a given fear warning to people know, so. I was shocked when I read in some of the things, they did a fantastic job, so I was very impressed.
And we got into Thanksgiving senior dinner, right, just to pass our thanks to Brad Jones, to Bruce Tar, and Mary Prenti, the Police Department, the Fire Department, all who got our seniors there safely, and Pat Lee for the nice job he did. I thought the place looked real nice, and it was a great time for all. Thank you for all the board members attending. It was just great. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Prisco?
I attended the Thanksgiving senior dinner, it was fantastic, it's a great way to get into the holiday spirit. I only have one thing. I did attend a NORCAM meeting a few weeks ago, or a week ago, and what I learned at the, is that the Cable Advisory Committee, Mr. Valiakonis hasn't met in quite a long time. I reached out to Jackie, she was great, she got me the information. I tried to reach out to some of the members, especially the chairperson, and I cannot get any kind of response back, and one of the main reasons why they really need to be a Cable Advisory Committee meeting is we're coming up, we've got a little bit of time, but a couple of years, we're going to be renegotiating our contracts with Verizon and Comcast, but there's a desire on NORCAM's part, which I think is a smart idea, is to really start some of the low-level discussions now, to prepare for those negotiations. Comcast and NORCAM will not have any discussions with NORCAM, because they only really report to the Cable Advisory Committee. And I can't get the Cable Advisory Committee to kind of reach back to me, so I was looking for advice.
I think we.
Need something to help me out here.
Put them on the agenda, come before us.
I was hoping you were going to suggest that.
The avenue is through using the liaison, but if they're not responding to that, we don't know what else to do.
I emailed and called the chippers, and I had no response.
Do you guys have any other thoughts?
I would, maybe you get a list of the members and their addresses, and Jack, or somebody send a little notice out, schedule a meeting in January, give a little more lead time.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. We have plenty of time. I just, I need help. I'm looking to the board, and maybe Mr. Valiakonis' staff, if I find a way to get somebody to get back to me.
Why don't we do that for the second meeting in January, the first meeting is high after the meeting.
Yeah. We'll probably find you in February.
I hear you. I'm looking just to see when that's going to be. 21st, which is a Tuesday. Typically, the committee is relatively inactive during the periods of time when we're not negotiating a contract with Verizon or with Comcast. I know that they do have a role in terms of reviewing the doings of the, of NORCAM, but I'll reach out to them in terms of scheduling a meeting with the board.
Well, in fact, the review, as I recall, the way we set up NORCAM was that there's a contract or an agreement between us and them, associated with them delivering specific services, which gave us the opportunity to terminate that agreement if certain goals weren't made met. So it might be good to, well, the Cable Advisory Committee's not necessarily directly involved with that, it's really the Cable Committee.
I don't know about a Cable Committee.
What's a Cable Committee?
Isn't there a, isn't the Cable Board, NORCAM have a board?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, that's right.
I think it's the Cable Advisory Committee.
Cable Advisory, they're the overseer.
Of NORCAM, right.
NORCAM has a board, has a corporate board.
Right.
Okay, then it is then.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Fodi?
Again, just to reiterate what my colleague said regarding the senior Thanksgiving dinner, I think the Jones family and Senator Tar and Mary Prenti did a great job to think, feeding over 250 people in two consecutive days is a feat, and I think they did a great job. The only other thing, I attended the North Reading-Linfield Thanksgiving Day game, and I gotta say, in all the games I've been to in the last 10 years, it was, it was an excellent game. We went back and forth the whole, the whole game, and to see North Reading prevail was great. I think it was, it was great for them to finish the season that way, considering how the rest of the season went. To beat a team that was, only had one loss was great. So I congratulate all the players, they did a great job, and the coaches.
Thank you.
Do you know, in terms of what my colleague said regarding the senior Thanksgiving Day luncheon, thank you to Representative Tar, Senator Tar, Representative Jones, his wife, of course, because I'm sure she put more hours behind putting that together than us.
I'm sorry, I left her.
And all the sponsors, including our colleague, Mr. Masary and his wife, Senior Echoes, and Singing Trooper and his wife. I think that's quite a bit of entertainment for no dollars, and a good meal on a Sunday afternoon just before Thanksgiving. Great way to start the holiday season. Other than that, I just want to publicly praise a crew in the Water Department. I wish I knew who they were, but a week ago Saturday, the water main break on Stewart Road, and last Monday morning, a resident of Stewart Road that I'm somewhat familiar with contacted me, and he's a retired engineer, and he's, in my opinion, difficult to please and make happy, and we could not be more appreciative and more complimentary to the water crew that got out to Stewart Road a week ago Saturday, their professionalism and how efficient they were in finding, locating, getting to the problem, and resolving it in a short period of time. He was very impressed, so I applaud.
So I applaud the members of that crew that worked on that particular Saturday to rectify that problem. That's all I have this evening. Oh, Mr. Valiakonis?
I do, thank you, thank you. If there's no other business before the board, I just want to make a statement. The chairman indicated this evening that I would not be seeking reappointment. And what I want to do is I just want to add a couple of comments to that. After much reflection, I've decided that my term as town administrator shall come to an end when my appointment and contract expire on June 30th of 2014. I've agonized about my decision to leave North Reading for the past several months and have spent more than a few sleepless nights replaying what I could have done differently to extend my time in this wonderful community that has been so good to me over the last eight and a half years. However, it's unrealistic to think that a majority of this board supports me enough to reappoint me. And as they say, it is what it is. After careful consideration of the events over the past year and a half, I've concluded that I deserve to be treated with respect, dignity, and trust in performing this difficult and thankless job. I've worked 30 years as a town administrator in Massachusetts and realize that there is a certain viciousness that goes with being in public service, and that is truly unfortunate. I've worked hard to build my professional character and reputation throughout my career and want to leave with it not being any more tarnished than it's already been. I'm proudest of many significant achievements, but most especially for the department heads and the employees who run this town to the best of their ability each and every day. And I know that these individuals support my efforts. I basked in our success as a community and suffered in silence when things went wrong. And they did sometimes, as we all know. That I remain silent too long in the face of relentless and unfair criticisms for doing my job is my biggest regret. I am very proud that North Reading is a better place than when I arrived in August of 2005. I'd like to end with a quote. Leaders think and talk about solutions and followers think and talk about problems. Hopefully, I've offered you and the community more solutions than problems in my time in serving as town administrator. I wish the board well in the future in finding my successor and may he or she enjoy your enthusiastic and full support. Thank you.
Would you do a jury? On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.